Looks like everybody's here. All righty, Mr. Manager, you want to present this first presentation?
Yes, sir, we've got a, the next step in the process, we're going to hear an update from residents on our economic development strategic plan, so I'm going to turn it over tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you guys for giving me another opportunity to present an update from residents and their team. First, just a couple of things, just want to thank you guys once again for GBL 2040 and your support of this economic development strategic action plan. Secondly, we've been working with residents since February of this year, we've held numerous roundtable and stakeholder events, as well as did business and community surveys, and they've taken all that input into consideration, and so thank you guys for that. And finally, we will be coming back to you, we're on track right now, we'll be coming back to you guys in September of this year, and we'll be presenting to you guys the draft of this plan. And on that note, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Stephen Pedego, and he will present to you guys an update that they've been working on since the last three months, since your last meeting. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Good.
I know, right?
Well, good afternoon, everybody.
You're muted.
Because I think I'm gonna have to unmute myself.
Exactly, still muted.
Am I unmuted now? Just one second.
Well.
Nope, we can do this.
Nope.
I should be unmuted now. Says I'm unmuted, guys, am I unmuted?
Okay, I hear you.
Okay, on my side, it says I'm unmuted, so. Now, can you guys hear me now?
Sign language.
What about now, you guys can hear me now? It says I'm unmuted on my side, that's why I'm suggesting. Any hopes?
Is that from, is that from their end or our end, or do we know?
I'm unmuted on my end.
There may be the speakers.
Ken, what you got around your neck, you look very official, but what is that?
I got a style.
You know, you got a, you got an.
Oh, because I want y'all to know who I am, because y'all might.
Oh, that's. Thought you were a.
Now, if I don't put a ride by deck, I'll lose it.
You'll lose the car, yeah.
Hey, guys, can you hear me now?
I now own two because of that reason, one in my wallet, whatever.
Hey, guys, can you hear me now?
Can we go on to on two?
Well, give us some. Okay.
Okay, can we go and get started if you guys can hear me, yes?
All right, while we get that sorted out, let's move on to the next item, I think Matt wants to give a quick overview of the procurement process, and then we'll follow that with an update on the latest on the SRT connection.
Okay, hi, Matt.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, I'm going to introduce the Swamp Rabbit Trail update, and then turn it over to Kalen and Nick to provide information about the project and construction timelines. On the procurement piece, just a bit of background on this project, the Cleveland Connector was initially funded pre-COVID in the FY20 budget. During the development of the FY21 budget, this was one of the projects that had funds recalled. If you all recall, during the development of that budget, we recalled several million dollars of hospitality tax-funded projects due to uncertainty. This was around March, April 2020, we were having those discussions. Funding was restored in FY21, we went back and restored the initial funding for the project. During FY22, council approved an additional $300,000 for the project as part of the FY22 Trails and Greenways. So that gave us a project budget of approximately 1.3 million. Given the engineering design, the engineer's estimate put that, that project in range at 1.3 million, but that was more than a year ago. As you all know, we've seen significant escalations in construction pricing, as well as contractors that are just very busy. And so that, along with a, an accelerated timeline for this project, led to the single bid we got on July 12th from LJ Inc., who is a contractor we've worked with on a number of projects. They, they provided the only responsive bid, it came in at about 2.3 million, which obviously is, well exceeds our budget capacity. Staff engaged in a good faith negotiation effort after the intent to award was able to identify around $240,000 of savings through scope reduction and redesign to get us to the point we're at today. The project's still over budget by around 770,000, and so that's the point we're at now in terms of the procurement. The, the biggest issue, and Kalen and Nick can, can add to this in their conversations with the contractor, material scarcity. They've got other work lined up, and so trying to find a gap in their schedule to fit this, this one in, and then the compressed timeline to get this open as soon as practical after the completion of the Swamp Rabbit Trail bridges. So that's the, the basis of the procurement and the history, and I'll turn it over to Kalen to talk about the project status.
Good afternoon. Appreciate you having me here, so some of this is going to be repetitive based off of what Matt just said, so I'll try to get the bulk of it. But the last time we talked about this in any substantial public forum was on the vote for the tunnel closure back in January. And so since then, we hit the ground running with our project engineer, Thomason Hutton, to finalize the engineering based off of the, the the actual closure of the tunnel being voted on and being finalized. And so there was a number of items we had to work through engineering-wise to get to that point. And so in April, that was completed, went through a series of staff, comment periods, and then went directly into, into permitting and bid package development. And so there was a little bit of, of a delay during the permitting due to some floodplain concerns that were brought up with our environmental engineering folks. But we were able to get it advertised at the beginning of June, opened in beginning of July, and then since opening, as Matt mentioned, we only got the single bid. We've been going through value engineering with LJ there, so this is repetitive based off of what Matt just said. So where the value engineering came in was a reduction in some traffic control, reduction in some asphalt on the Richland Way itself. And then the biggest savings was removal of a section of retaining wall there on the north side of the plans that resulted in about a little over $200,000 in savings. And so to accomplish that, we have interfaced with Spinks, who owns the adjacent property, to discuss obtaining a construction easement, which they were receptive to. And so that's pending development of the legal documents for that, but it is something that's going to be mutually beneficial for both parties, and so we don't anticipate running into any issues there. There are additional savings, once we get under contract and under construction, that could potentially be had, most notably in city hauling services. There's going to be a large, large quantity of dirt that needs to be taken off-site, and so Public Works has been willing to offer up some trucks and some manpower for that, assuming we can figure out logistics when it comes to the actual construction. So some goal dates here, we're hoping to have notice proceed out no later than the end of this week, so that they can start, start mobilization on Monday. Substantial completion is 150 calendar days from the notice to proceed, which puts us at the beginning of January with final at the beginning of February. And then in the interim, we are working through some, some different scenarios as to how we can get people to that point of the Lawrence Road Bridge before this piece is opened. So that's it for the paperclip update, any, you want me to continue on with the rest of it?
Would you go back to that last slide?
Sure.
Looking at your dates again.
Yes, sir.
So talk again about the timelines of the bridge being open versus this being open?
Sure, so the bridges, and Nick may have a couple of additional actual solid dates, but they're on schedule for December completion. So between mid to late December to substantial completion, it's not beyond the scope of reality that people could be using it at least in flux during the substantial completion period. And so we're talking about as little as, you know, two to three weeks, up to two months probably of lag time.
And the county's on track to do what they need to do, so we're on track for the December 2023 opening, as was originally planned, with the exception of this piece.
Correct.
Every other piece is on track.
That's what we're told from the county, yes.
Now, being, being total, total double sure that it is.
I mean, I, I think it goes without saying, but I'll say it, we paid a tremendous premium for these bridges. And we did that because we had lost so much time over the years for this project. And now here we are. We're depend, unless the county does what they're going to do, and I feel confident in them as you do, but, but we're at a point where in those last six months, and somebody needs to be having a weekly eye-to-eye, chair-to-chair, mano a mano, or woman-to-woman, December 2023 is the expectation. Otherwise, the premium that we paid for the bridges was for naught, we could have paused those and not paid that premium. Now, the paperclip.
Make sure it's 2022, not 2023.
Well, I'm sorry, 2020.
Some other contractors come in at a lower price.
Perceivably so, yes.
Okay, now, if we were to push it back, do we have any idea at this point how long we would need to push it back in order to try to get those cost savings?
I do not know that offhand.
If we were not, if we were to push it back, would people still be able to access the trail?
Yes, not from, not directly from Cleveland Park as this project provides, but yes, the trail will be accessible at multiple points.
Okay, in my understanding, they'd have to, instead of going through these series of switchbacks, they'd be going directly up a hill?
Um, so the point of access would be at E-ball, which there, depending on if this project is on, under construction or not, there could be a pathway through Richland Way, or if it's under construction, would be closed.
What will we need to do in order to be able to determine whether or not? Two questions. One, would we be able to get another contractor who could build this, bid this at a lower price? And two, how much more timeframe that contractor would need in order to meet that, meet that price?
I think we would probably have to go back through the rebid process to determine both of those answers.
And how long would that take?
Matt?
Say again, I'm sorry?
Six weeks minimum.
Six weeks?
Is that because of our own internal policies, or what drives that?
So Councilmember, it would take one to two weeks in order to get the bid back out on the street, we would like a minimum of four weeks on the street, and then one to two weeks to evaluate the bids for performance on the other end.
And this gentleman was getting ready to say something, I'm sure that was.
Yeah.
Sorry, Nick Palmas with Engineering, so I have anecdotally talked with a few of the contractors that were at the prebid, but that did not put in a bid. And it was as much about the timeframe in some cases as it was about the time of year it was. So they were not the only governmental agency getting a lot of influx in cash right now, so they just happen to be busy right now. So, you know, if we were talking December 2023, and we had a lot of time before this project were supposed to start, they might have openings in their schedules. But as far as getting somebody who could come work on August 15th, that was one of the big restrictions.
Okay.
People couldn't mobilize that quickly to get out here.
Yeah, yeah.
I have some questions, then, if we're going to deliberate it. If we postponed, paused, and went out and rebid, could the numbers go up?
Yes.
Okay, we know a lot of federal money will start coming through, I know as soon as August. So that's going to, and hopefully some are away, I'm very hopeful, but that's going to increase the glut of projects into this area. So that could drive contractor availability to be stretched.
Yeah, so generally speaking, what we're seeing right now is we're seeing a lot of demand, everybody else is getting a lot of money at the same time that supply is going down. So everybody's having a hard time getting concrete, getting asphalt, getting their materials, getting mast arms. They're having trouble delivering projects, and there are only a certain number of contractors to go around, and demand is at a, you know, high right now. So it's only, right now, we're only seeing that continue, we haven't seen that change. It's, it's just keeps getting more, more demand and less supply.
Have we seen prices drop since 2020? Have we seen any bids over time drop? Do they give any indication of Ukraine as an influence on bidding? Do we get supplies from Ukraine? I can tell you, we do for my house, so I think they do for that.
Steel, so maybe some of our mast arms would be the number one thing.
Is E-ball, what's the grade on E-ball? It is not ADA compliant?
It's, it's a really tight.
It's a thin sidewalk.
There's parallel, there's parallel parking, because a lot of people don't have driveways, so it's, it's not very conducive for a bypass route at this time.
Have we engaged the neighborhood on E-ball for the prospect of the Swamp Rabbit Trail traffic running up their street?
Not specifically for that, but they were heavily involved with the public input for the tunnel closure, and I've, I've since followed up with a number of residents in that area, yeah.
Think it'd be interesting to do that, I've ridden, I've ridden E-ball a couple of times on a bike, and may not be ADA compliant, but as a temporary thing, it's, it's, it's not a bad ride. In fact, it's, I thought it was very good, often wondered why we didn't just use E-ball, except we have a few houses along there. I was always curious what would their, be a reaction be, certainly as a temporary measure, I think it actually makes a good temporary measure from what I can see.
But it's not ADA compliant.
But I'm not suggesting it be a permanent thing, because it's not as straight and direct, for one thing.
No, I think we would probably have to remove a direction of travel to kind of do that efficiently. So we're talking about removal of parallel parking and removal of one lane of travel to be able to, to house that many people.
But we're fortunate to have a, to have a temporary place is my, my point, really, I wouldn't say it's permanent, but it's, it's not a bad temporary.
So just one thing to keep in mind on that is, if we are under construction for the paperclip, that does involve Richland Way, the end of Richland Way going into the tunnel as well, and so people being able to go through the tunnel to access E-ball on that side may not be feasible during construction.
Question if I may here, and, and to anybody in Public Works or Engineering, or who, who is dealing with these escalating costs on any type of bid projects, and Nick and Clint and everybody. But I think to Dorothy's question about how long we've been in an inflationary cost scenario, environment? I mean, is there not some more knowledgeable than the average bear consultant whereby before we elected to go through a multi-week? And I'm not saying we're there yet, by the way, I just, I appreciate your questions very much, Councilmember Gibson, but, you know, somebody's got to be more than speculating, but in a very knowledgeable manner projecting how long these inflationary pressures are going to be there. And simultaneously, in some sort of position to predict based on supply and demand of work jobs, availability of contractors, before we went through a bid process, what the likelihood is that somebody's going to come down at least to our threshold, right, our appetite for it? And so in summary, what I'm trying to say is, is there not some sort of recognized expert in the field where we could say what-if scenarios before we actually have to cut bait here potentially and go after a different approach?
I don't know the answer to the supply, as far as demand, I don't see the demand waning in the near future unless something catastrophic happens. But you have the IIJA bill and a bunch of other grant opportunities, I only see demand growing in the next few years.
Every dollar, every dollar is precious, right, but, but for anybody in decision-making, you know, position, you've got to trade off time delayed for what amount of cost savings achieved, right? And so that's just my way of saying, if through some outreach, if we could get a better handle on this before Council has to consider whatever significant measure does, that would be preferable, in my view.
Same here, and, and it seems to me, I mean, I understand what you're saying about, we don't know what's going to happen, but, but one of the things, it sounds like you guys are telling us is that one of the pressures on this price is for contractors who basically have already have their schedules filled up and, and would have to jump over hand over foot in order to try to make this project work. I mean, it seems to me that if we give contractors a longer timeframe for it to be done, and they don't have to have those same pressures, that we at very least will get more contractors, and if we get more contractors, I would suspect that we're going to get better bids. But, but like I say, I'd like, I'd like to know the answers to those questions before I commit to spending $800,000 on, on something that seems to me to be based in large part on a self-imposed deadline.
If, if it does help, so we might get more bidders, but from a unit price standpoint, I, I kind of put it side by side with what we've been seeing recently on other bids. There weren't any pay items that were out of reason for, there wasn't, there weren't just some pay items that were way high or way low or anything. It was, most of the pay items in each unit price was, was within reason of what I'm seeing recently in general from other contractors also. So I, I, I don't know that I can say for certainty that even if we get more contractors, that their prices will be lower.
Well, yeah, I don't expect you to say for certainty, I'm just.
If we postpone, do we possibly lose this bidder? In other words, if we, if, if tonight council does not give you permission to commit to this contractor, then really all bets are off on his bid. Isn't that correct, that his bid is contingent on, or in this timeline, on, on our release of it? And so by virtue of doing anything other than, you know, what you have here, we're delaying, we're delaying this project.
Would be delaying, yes, there, there is an opening, they're coming off of another project, this timing hit perfect. So they're actually peeling off of something in two days that they're going to be mobilizing so that they can hit this, this August 15th, so.
What premium did we commit to on the bridges to meet this schedule, Matt, roughly, I mean, I'm remembering a few million, but.
I think our additional appropriation was in the neighborhood of 1.8 million.
And we eliminated one tunnel, I mean, excuse me, one bridge, so it was, it was tremendous. And so in theory, that was for naught if we delay this. I mean, we didn't, we didn't carry through with our timeline, and then the county shouldn't be held accountable for their timeline. I mean, what, you know, I don't see E-ball as an equal substitute personally, simply because it's not ADA accessible, and it imposes on that community and that parking and that, so, so to me to say E-ball is just as good, I would say, why not just defer them to Washington Road and they can cross over at grade? I mean, we got here for two reasons. One, the bridges, this council supported bridges, albeit there was a lot of discussion, but supported it for safety reasons to not go at grade. Two, we supported eliminating the third bridge and paying a premium for the two that remained because this project had been delayed for so many years, and it was an economic development issue. This project, plain and simple, is an economic development project, plain and simple. So to postpone, we risk losing this bidder, maybe, we risk price inflation, getting even higher bids, and really, we jeopardize doing it at all, in, in my mind, and, and certainly, you know, it, it lets off the hook, the other components. I, I just don't see postponing as, as a good option at this point.
Well, I can say this, I, I am committed to doing the paperclip. Now, now, my recollection was the reason why we ended up spending $6.4 million on these bridges was because there was some fear that if we did not do the bridges, that the county would not go forward with its part of doing the trail. At least, that's what.
No, it's a safety issue.
That's what was told me, now, I don't think there's any fear that the county is going to finish doing the trail at this point. And I think that this is a project that, 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 where we have a temporary solution, which will allow people to access the trail. And, and I'm just, I'm, yeah, I'm just not, I'm not comfortable paying that type of a premium without knowing the answers to the questions that, that I have.
Question if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Think how, how I want to word this, so it's, comes across the way I want it to in a public setting. Can we be assured that we have fully explored every appropriate and legal consideration to procurement while still seeking to be creative and nimble in terms of how we've looked at contractors to help us with this job? And the translation there is, is there any other way to go about this in an appropriate and legal manner to help us creatively solve this? And maybe even a host of other projects that. And maybe even a host of other projects that the same issues are going to be.
Yeah, keep arising over and over and over and over and over again.
Because if the answer there is no, then I will naturally say we should. If the answer there is yes, it'll give me, you know, response to my question.
Fully understand the question, Councilmember?
I can repeat it.
Means we'll, we'll continue to look for ways to reduce the cost.
So in terms of
All through the process.
Of this procurement process, we have reached the end of our negotiation. If we can't settle this, we're, we're going to have to close the bid and start over. Any further changes to the scope or significant modification of the work calls into question the validity of the bid that the other folks who declined to bid were not, we're not aware of at the time they made the decision not to bid. So for, for ethics and public procurement, we would have to stop, shut this down and start over.
So if you, in, in, in my day job, I work in this some as well. So if you declared an unsuccessful bid process and closed it down per policy and procedure, and then you, you retain the right to either stop there or revisit it at a time in the future, are there any other within the bounds of procurement law governing the city of Greenville? Are there any other alternate approaches that we might think through or consider? Mind you, I'm stressing legal and appropriate, that were not considered on the first time that could yield a more favorable outcome?
Not, not that I'm aware of. At, at the cost magnitude we're talking about, a, an IFB is the appropriate way to procure this project. And that's the exercise we've gone through. If, if we were in a different phase of the project, a design build, you know, would be a different alternative. But we've got the design, we've got permits, and so all we're asking for is somebody to come in and build it for us.
So there's no, what is sometimes called sole source procurement scenarios that could bother you?
I mean, this is, this is a pure competitive process. Any, any contractor that's licensed in South Carolina can compete for it. And, and so given, given that, we can't really limit competition with a sole source or, or other opportunity.
How, how long has this project been talked about overall? I mean, this, this was long before I came on council. Y'all's frustration made that evident.
Yeah, oh gosh, eight, eight years maybe.
Eight years.
Again, it was a county project, so we, you know, weren't as engaged. We're just happy to have the investment by the county, which is still kind of, you know, to give credit, the county, it's unprecedented, the amount of money the county is spending on this trail in the city of Greenville while they have, they have a lot of people wanting to spend money elsewhere. So kudos to them for doing that, but been a long time.
But we've been trying to bring this across the finish line for eight years.
We only wanted, but we still do want the, the bridges for safety reasons. Because our observation is on the Swamp Rabbit Trail going up to Traveler's Rest, there's at least two places that are very dangerous. And we don't like that and we think we should do something better. So I, I still think, you know, the return on the investment and everything else with all the delays, it's still going to be worthwhile. And we, I hate it, but, you know, we have the capacity to address it. And that's the good thing about the position we're in. And these guys don't see a better way to go, so.
We have more certainty about doing this on these numbers than we do about postponing it. The uncertainty around postponing this, I have yet to hear of a price going down on anything, anything. Not while on council, not in my personal life, not in any world I live in are prices going down. And, and to postpone this prolongs a project that's been eight years in the making that this council committed to already. And this is three quarters of a million dollars. It is economic development. It isn't tourism, it is tourism because it's the trail, but it is economic development. And we have a lot of businesses along there that have counted on it. Not to mention a tremendous project in the pipeline along Lawrence Road. I don't see how postponing this and risking not having any bidder is, is even being considered. Now, the question of where the money comes from is another discussion, but doing it? This is a critical piece of this connection. And if there's one thing constituents that I hear from ever excited about these days, it's about the Lawrence Road extension to the Swamp Rabbit Trail. And hoofing them up, E-ball is not going to get it. It's not the same. It's not even close to the same.
I don't think they're recommending that, so.
No, but I mean, that's the alternative.
Right, yeah.
I, I think out of respect for time.
Yeah, we need to go on, which, which back to our. Okay, switch back to our economic development discussion. And I think we, that was a good, good, good discussion to have.
Hey, everybody, can you hear me now?
Oh, there we go. Okay, thank you.
We did it. How are y'all? Good to see you. Let me grab my screen and we'll jump right into the presentation.
A little bit, a little bit louder.
It'd be good to get a man here to talk.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. It's good to be with you virtually and talk a little bit about the work that we've done on the economic development plan since we saw you last in the spring. What I will do is do a couple pauses throughout the presentation. So we'll start with talking a little bit about the discovery process and what we've learned and the research foundations for the, for the strategy work. So we'll do that part of the presentation first. I'll stop, answer questions, and then we'll move into the draft strategy work as well and provide an opportunity for discussion and feedback there as well. As Merle suggested, this is absolutely still a draft. We're still in the process of putting this together, still working with your steering committee and, and team to really identify what we feel are the appropriate action items under each of these strategies. But feel like we're at a very good place to be able to share with you today what we think is the foundation for the work that we've been doing together. So with that, just want to remind you about where we are in the process. We've have done four sort of key, key pieces of, of the work. We, you know, built out a, a discovery plan. We did a lot of research and data, which many of you saw when we were there in the spring in terms of the analytics around the benchmarking work, industry sector work that we did, analyzing both a community and business survey, which then really led us to spend some time in Greenville doing an array of, I think we did 12 to 13 roundtable discussions, a handful of key interviews, and then obviously had a lot of folks there for the community workshop session that I think some of you actually attended when we were there in the spring. We're now into phase four, which is basically taking the research and discovery work, engagement work, working with Marilyn, his team, as well as the steering committee to outline a strategic plan, which we think is actually hopefully going to move the needle as it relates to economic development in the city of Greenville. So what have we learned thus far as part of the presentation? Again, as a, as a reminder, these are the kind of the things that we've done, analytics, we did some occupational skill analytics, lots of engagement as well. So, you know, to keep in mind, when we looked at the overarching benchmarking work, Greenville is very much in that top tier of cities as it relates to its tiers. There's a lot of opportunity to build on. And in fact, when you look at the metrics across our benchmarking work, there's a lot of viability in, in talent attraction and retention. There's a lot of opportunity that's happening in terms of quality of place, but also presenting us an opportunity to do some better work around how do we ensure we're building resiliency around the economy as well as thinking about how we access innovation, which you'll see as part of the work going forward. We love these charts at residence. These charts are, give you a sense of when you take the categories that we've looked at and put all the, the 60 or 70 metrics that we have in there and you, you categorize them, and then you do the compare comparisons. What you can start to see is where the larger part of the green actually is where you start to see stronger advantages for the city of Greenville. So for instance, a lot of opportunities around talent, a lot of opportunity around quality of place as well. And again, this is just a summary of, of, of the research that we had. So to, to take that data and to sort of formulate a better sense of what are those takeaways? One of the things that the team has done is, is establish what we think are, are 10 key talking points as it relates to the economic development strategy. I think about these as headlines. These are the things that are important to us to remember as we're thinking about and reviewing the strategy and evaluating the future of Greenville's economic development efforts going forward. So let's talk about this. The first, I think, is really important. And this represents obviously a lot of the work that you did in the Greenville 2040 plan. But Greenville is a very fast-growing community. It's outpacing the state and outpassing the US. The population increase in the city of Greenville has increased about 15%. Median incomes are up as well as, so this presents us an opportunity as we think about the economic development strategies going forward. We're not necessarily managing decline, but really thinking about how we manage growth and prosperity going forward. Again, thinking about how we create an, an opportunity for all Greenville residents and businesses to, to participate in the economy that we're hoping to create in the community. Secondly, Greenville has, you know, when we look at our best cities report, Greenville's among the top cities as it, as it relates to the investment in talent attraction and quality of place. It's a highly educated community. You know, when you look at the number of residents in Greenville that have a BA or higher, the metric is about 60% higher than the US average. However, when we thought, start to think about equity and diversity challenges, you know, communities of color represent an opportunity, there's an inequity there. And so there's an opportunity to think about how we reflect those, that, that gap in our strategy and how we try to address that strategy, creating an opportunity for improving career pathways and skill training initiatives and the, and the sorts as it relates to the strategy going forward. Understanding that for many of you that when we had our one-on-one discussions and what we brought you together as a workshop was very important priority to think about an innovative economy, but also one that's creating opportunity and access for everyone. So you'll see that as we get to the strategic work going forward. Strategy takeaway three is, you know, Greenville's been a really great place in terms of placemaking. And in fact, I think a lot of us have talked about Greenville as one of the premier cities for this across the country. You're the, you, you are and continue to be a city that we as, we at residents hold up and talk a lot about the investments in downtown, the quality of place, your parks, your trails, those types of things. But one of the things that I think that you'll see in this strategy is that we really want to push you all to think about how do we capitalize on that placemaking strategy? How do we think about building a more export-driven based economy? That's not just built on downtown development and retail development and quality of place, but thinking about life sciences, innovation, entrepreneurship and the sorts. Those are things that are going to be really important as we, as we go forward. Takeaway four is, you know, when you look at the region of Greenville, there's a lot of competitive industry sectors here that are export-driven or traded sector. You know, and a lot of those are across the industrial services sectors. You'll see when we walk through the industry work, that's automobile, automobile production technology, heavy machinery, advanced materials and those types of things. Now, understanding that Greenville's got, obviously has some land challenges and as well as real estate challenges. One of the things that we have to really think through as it relates to those export sectors is how can the city participate in that piece of the economy? Well, one of the answers for that is thinking through the professional services, the headquarter opportunities and professional needs that are really tied to those sectors. Goal five is, 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 you know, we do believe that when you look at the Greenville economy over, over, over at large, there's a real opportunity to build that innovation economy that many of you are hoping for. There's research institutions, there's skilled talent, there's quality of place, importantly, a pro-business climate. And so one of the things that, that you'll see as we get to the strategic work is thinking through how can we as a city with our partners be more intentional about supporting scale-ups in small businesses and, and helping to push along that entrepreneurial ecosystem that's really important to generating the next generation of what those, what Greenville's businesses and economy will look like. Point six is that there's a lot of opportunity around life sciences. Again, we had some intimate conversations with your life science institutions, many of you as well, talking about the opportunity for this, thinking about is life sciences really potentially that pillar as it relates to the innovation-based economy? And so, you know, just looking at what you have now in the city of Greenville, you know, there's a competitive share that's about 50% higher than the US average. There's lots of opportunity that relates to some major anchored companies that really can start the foundation for this as well. And, and more importantly than that, I think one of the things that I took away from, from this industry sector when we did those industry roundtable discussions was this was a sector that's really excited about being Greenville as, as sector that really wants to partner with the city and really think about what are those opportunities that public and private entities can really help as it relates to growing the economy. Goal seven, I think, is, is that Greenville, you know, while a great place to live, high quality of place, high talent attraction and, and, and those types of things, great research institutions. It, you know, the city does face some stark equity challenges. And, and I know that when we were there, several of you had, had some informative comments for that, for us on that, actually challenged us to go back and look at, look at the data as it relates to Greenville and the city as, to these issues. And so we, our, our team did that. And, and so, you know, I think some things to think about that is that, you know, 3 in 10 Greenville residents are people of color. There is, as, as many of you, several of you have suggested, the number of black residents is shrinking in the city. So there's something to think about in terms of how do we address that issue? And so even looking at the gap of, of income as it relates to, you know, white residents versus black residents in Greenville, there's a pretty significant income gap. And so there's a, there's a challenge that we present as it goes forward to think about these issues as it relates to our economic development strategy. Yes, we want to build an innovation-based, export-based driven economy that's going to benefit all of the things that you make. But we also want to make sure that we're addressing the challenges of equity and thinking through what are some real strategic efforts from an economic development standpoint that can really hopefully start to close this gap and move the needle forward. And we're going to talk about those and I look forward to your feedback on the ideas. Six, excuse me, eight is, you know, look, you all are really, really lucky to have the higher education partners that you have. You've got Clemson outside of, of the city, you've got Furman, you've got Bob Jones, you've got a really great technical college and others. But one of the things I think we, that, that is, that jumps out at us, both with the conversations and to the workshop session and others, is there's an opportunity to think about how we can tap more into those, to those institutions. And not just from a, a technology transfer issue, but building pipelines and stickiness with a lot of the great students that are coming to Greenville, in the Greenville region, how do we keep them there? And so thinking through what those relationships look like will be something as it relates to the strategy going forward. Point nine is that it's not surprising that as you are a fast-growing region and doing a lot of the things that are, that are right in, in economic development, you are facing some growing pains of this. And so, you know, one of the things that, that you'll see in the strategy is that we've really tried to connect the efforts that you've outlined in your Greenville 2040 plan to some of the economic development strategies as well. So, you know, addressing the issues of affordability and gentrification and the challenges that come with, with congestion. All of those are very important and all of those, by the way, were issues that were relate, that were raised in the workshop session. But they were also raised in our community surveys as well that we did. So we want to make sure that we're thinking about them, which is why a, a plan, a comprehensive plan like you have that's doing the, the work around housing and connectivity is important to think about how that connects to the economic development plan as well. And then finally, I think the last thing that I would, that would suggest is that Greenville has a storied history of public-private partnerships, particularly around the development and the creation of all the great things that many residents of Greenville enjoy in the downtown. But I would suggest to you, and I think our team would suggest to you, as we go through this implementation process and as we go through the strategic work, there's a need to think about how we build stronger partnerships in more defined roles going forward. That's, you know, thinking through partnerships amongst public and private, that's thinking about partnerships and engagement around our economic development entities. But it's also thinking about how we also align perhaps some of the efforts that the city and the county are working on together. Keeping in mind, we all have to sort of row the boat together and do it in a way that's, that's coordinated to really have the effect that we're hoping to have on, in terms of the economic development efforts and challenges that the city faces on a go-forward basis. So those are sort of 10 things that we learned. What I do want to do now really quickly, and then I'll stop and open it up for conversation and questions. Let's just outline some of the key industry sectors. I think you all know, and this is all in the data report, but, you know, one of the things, we'll talk about cluster development as part of the strategic work. You know, automobile development and manufacturing, advanced manufacturing is important to the region. It's obviously real, that is just as important for the city as well. And so one of the things that you'll see as we go through this cluster development, cluster development recommendations, not in this detailed strategy we're going to talk about today, but going forward, is thinking about how the city should really be thinking about itself as the business's professional services for the sector, the headquarters piece of this. How do we attract more of the white collar jobs that are, that are associated with? As well as thinking about how we can create the opportunity for city residents to have access to the jobs that are being created in the region throughout the county as well. Production heavy technology, some of the same thing as well, a lot of opportunity being have, happening around Greenville Technology College. Again, same idea, how do we attract those headquarters and professional developments services that are really associated with this firm? Same thing with advanced, advanced materials, but maybe taking a, a, a bit of another step on this is thinking through what is the R and D opportunities that are associated with the sector? This is a sector that is going to be transformational, that is going to be even more important as we go forward. So, you know, thinking through what are the R and D, again, what is the brain center? The technology nerves that are sort of tied to the sector that the city of Greenville could compete with as it relates to the sector? Life sciences. Life sciences, already talked about this in the, in the, in the top ten key takeaways, but this is a real opportunity for the city of Greenville. Lots of opportunity around pharma and manufacturing and the R and D for the sector, a lot of opportunity hopping at the institutions as well. So really thinking about how this becomes an opportunity as it relates to the innovation district, the startup work that we're wanting to think through going forward. Business services, again, an opportunity, but also being even more specialized in this idea of financial technology. You know, there's some opportunity around fintech, connecting some of the financial technology groups, opportunities growing there. And keeping in mind that this is an interesting sector because it's creating lots of opportunity in terms of wages and income. And it has actually a greater share of female employees, for instance, than some of the other traded sector work that we've done going forward. So with that, I just gonna, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. I'd love to answer your questions and take any comments and then move to the strategic work as well. I just throw a lot at you.
Many of those goals are shared goals with the county, certainly advanced manufacturing, advanced materials and advanced manufacturing, automotive, et cetera. In our earlier sessions, I think you also talked a little bit about, oh, you know, advertising and marketing domain in Greenville, which has a long heritage because of the unusual number of advertising companies in the nineteen sixties and seventies and what's grown up around that. And more broadly speaking, sort of the creative class kind of businesses. Certainly, we have a lot of those in, in the city, we have a lot of those in downtown, but all over the city. Kind of surprised that didn't make your, make your list.
It actually did make the list. We've wrapped that into business services. So we've included that as business services. In fact, if you look at the technical report, one of the things we did is we put marketing and advertising as in support sectors, part of, a part of business services. If you'd like us to call it out more specifically, we can do that. But we kind of just wrapped it in as the business services, thinking through that. Business services are a broad cluster that a lot of the export clusters would tap into. But you are right, there is, there is an absolute competitive advantage as it relates to that sector as well.
That's a very vibrant area and a lot of people move here for that, for that purpose.
So one of the things we could do is to build on that point is to pull it out if we want to, you know, I always think about, you know, when you talk about industry sectors, industry sectors are those things that sometimes you put in the storefront window, right? It's how you create a message to your city. If we feel like putting it in business and business services is losing the headlines, so to speak, let's pull it out and make it a target sector as it relates to one of the key identities of what the industry is as it relates to Greenville. Happy to do that. That's not a real big, big change frankly.
Mr. Mayor.
Just to, before we, I think my colleagues probably have lots of questions and comments. One thing I, I know we know is a body, but I just want to remind folks that are listening and hear that this really was, this really was born out of the Greenville twenty forty plan where we had three pillars and we all collectively said, hey, you know, these are great, three great pillars to have on Greenville twenty forty. But oh, by the way, I think we're missing one. And so we were missing economic development. And so instead of trying to squeeze a comprehensive plan into a twenty, Greenville twenty forty, we all said, hey, let's, let's do a side, a companion plan, strategic plan, and that's, that's what we have in front of us here. You know, we were closing in on the end of a pedestrian study and that really is a roadmap for us to determine where to appropriate money, policy related to it. And so that pedestrian study is a real roadmap. I see this as the same thing, that we've got a comprehensive plan, strategic plan that's put together with lots of, with all the stakeholders, hopefully, but all the stakeholders. And so that it provides council, city staff and the community a roadmap of our role in economic development and also gives us a benchmark by which we will appropriate money and pass policy that reflects this comprehensive plan. So.
I'm going to add something. I wanted to ask a question because when you listed about the stark inequities and challenges, I didn't see anything about transportation. It has, it is a problem in terms of wage, the wage gap, educational achievement, all of the other, the inability of some people to access consistent quality transportation is a major problem in this entire county to me. And because we do need that. And so I hope that we can, because to me that's being clear. Because people will tell you, if you can't get to work, you can't work. And so that's a major problem. And for us to have all of these wonderful things, but yet have this stark inconsistent transportation is not something that I'm proud of. And that, you know, more, the governments, all of them, need to do better. I am even apprehensive that our state has given the same allocation for transportation to this area. Same amount, thirty-four years. I'm just saying something's wrong. That we've got to change that because some of the problems and challenges we have, we wouldn't have them if we removed the barrier of transportation.
I got a few questions, comments. Stephen Ken Gibson here. Great presentation, great, great, great start so far. I want to ask a question first off, sort of piggybacks on what the mayor was saying. I mean, I understand that we're looking to leverage the, a lot of the sectors that are already sort of present here, the automotive, the manufacturing and stuff like that. But, but is there a, do you guys see an industry or a sector that the city of Greenville could be known for? I mean, like you look at Charlotte, Charlotte's known for banking. You look at, say, Boston, they're for life sciences, that kind of thing. Something where we can, while certainly while still leveraging our opportunities with the other sectors, but, but try to create a niche that, that, that we can sort of hone in on and, and sort of own.
Yeah, thanks for that question. So one of the things that I, I think that, you know, the sector that I think is a lot of opportunity for you guys as it relates to the city itself is, is the opportunity around life sciences. I think when you look at the data and the trends and the ecosystem that's building in the city and around the city that, that to me seems like an opportunity to, to really leverage. So I would suggest that the life sciences, and not just, and not just the pharmaceuticals, but the, the technology and research that's tied to that as a connect to even to some of the anchor-based institutions for there. For me, that's a sector that, that is, is an opportunity. You know, I think, so, so I think for me, that would probably be the one that you kind of put in the storefront window, so to speak. You know, as it relates to, you know, we looked at, we did detailed cluster analytics for, I think ten to twelve clusters that were sort of strong, techno, strong traded sector clusters, both in the region. And, you know, it, the challenge with trying to start from scratch, right? The idea of doing cluster development from scratch is that that is a economic development strategy that, that takes years upon years upon years upon years of trying to get the right types of firms together and the right types of enterprises and the support structures. And so our thought around the strategic work, our thought around the, the cluster work that we, that we've outlined for you is a couple of things. One, I think, is, is to look at life sciences as maybe that innovation-based cluster that you really can own. You are outperforming this, the, the US, you're outperforming the state. And when you look at the workforce capabilities and you look at the industry sector and this, and all those analytics and that's related to that, there's real opportunity. But the other thing I think that is, that I think is, is important to, and so that would be my, my one innovation-based economy. I think that the stuff that the mayor was mentioned earlier around creative services and business services, again, I think that that is a lot of opportunity as it relates to remote work and the access to enterprise creation. And you'll see how that's represented in the strategy going forward. And I think you want to do that, you'll definitely want to, you, you want to do that as a city because other cities are doing that and you have the capable and the quality of life around that. But the third thing I would, the, the thing that I think is important to note about the, the legacy clusters. And the reason that legacy clusters are, I think, important for us to, to, to not just sort of throw out and just, and not forget is that when you look at the FBI investment that's happening as it relates to those clusters, you know, Greenville, the reason of Greenville is really kind of punching above its weight there in terms of the amount of outside investment, particularly outside of foreign direct investment that's happening. And so the question for us, I think, is, or the same analogy that I would use if I was maybe presenting in Houston, for instance. You know, a lot of energy and analytics, a lot of sort of energy production doesn't happen, doesn't happen in Houston. But it's the brain center and the professional services of those sectors actually happens, like for instance, in Houston, Texas. I think your city is Greenville can kind of, in a sense, be the same sort of opportunity around that. How do you attract and capitalize again on all the place making investments that you've had to really attract the brain center and the business services and the professional services sort of tied to that sector? So when I think about your, your, your portfolio as it relates to industry growth and what that looks like for it, I'm saying, let's think about something that's new and innovative. Life sciences, it's growing really super fast. You've got some, you've got some anchor-based companies there who want to think about the innovation district for you. I think that's one key strategy and you'll see that represented in the suggested recommendations going forward. You know, two, yes, you want to think about the, the creative services and the fin technology and all the startup entrepreneurship that's happening that, that was mentioned as it relates to that, to those, to those sectors. And we want to do that work because we, we know that those entrepreneurs and those businesses are frankly, you know, they're making location decisions for two reasons. One, quality of place and two, access to talent. So you want to do that as a second piece. And then the third piece of that is saying, look, you understand that, 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 that we're not going to have all the land availability and all the industrial space as possible for those, 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 those professional, those services as it relates to automobile and technology, advanced manufacturing. But we could have the brain center and the knowledge center of that. We could have a headquarters strategy for that. And that would kind of be the third pillar that I would kind of, or the third lever as I would, I would pull as it relates to industry vector work. I think by doing that, you're able to do a couple of things. One, really address the opportunity of, of thinking about firm formation going forward. How do you build the next innovation-based economy? Two, I think you become a place that is relevant for technology workers and the young creative class and all the things that I heard from many of you talked about. But the third piece of that too, speaking to the former council member's point, is that if we want to try to, 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 to close the equity gap as it relates to those opportunities, trying to connect our city residents to some of those jobs that are outside of the county, that frankly are family-supporting jobs and high-income supporting jobs, maybe through technology, transportation initiatives, workforce initiatives. That's kind of the third element of cluster strategy and third way to think about cluster strategy going forward. And so I think that looking at it like through that lens, it gives you kind of a flavor of how to do three pieces of it to maybe attack some of the goals that we'd, that we'd want to accomplish with our, our strategy going forward. I hope that answers your question.
No, it does. And the second thing is, in the, in the study, it looks like we are, as compared to our counterparts, that, that we are low in both equity and diversity. Can you distinguish what those two terms mean?
Of course. So you are, in, in fact, one of the, I appreciate the comment because one of the things I think we talked about on our own team is actually separating that, separating that out, right? A community can be diverse and equitable and a community can be diverse and inequitable as well, right? So one of the things I think that's interesting about Greenville is that you are a fairly diverse community, right? You have a large presence of people of color. You've got, I think, an interesting growing LGBTQ community, all those types of things. And so, so a lot of diversity that's happening and in diversity even, I think, as it relates to even different types of skill opportunities as well. So diversity is, is one question. Equity is another question, right? And that is for us, looking at the differences in the gaps between different types of residents and different types of enterprises in Greenville. And so when we look at, we look at equity as it relates to Greenville, frankly, you're a community that has a large equity gap. There is a large gap between the have-nots and the haves in your community. And when we look at the data, particularly look at black households and people of color households, there's a stark income, income gap. It's about thirty-six thousand bucks, thirty-six thousand dollars. And I think when we look at the educational attainment level between sort of household talent that is related to people of color versus non, the, the white residents tend to have higher educational attainment. So it suggests an opportunity, there suggests that there is an equity challenge. And the way to do, and way to tackle that, as you'll see in some of the strategic work that we're going to share with you in a second, is to think through skilled training programs. It's perhaps to think about transportation, as a former, as her councilwoman previously mentioned, and, and thinking through how that relates to your comprehensive planning process. It's thinking about how we support entrepreneurs and people of color and being very dedicated to that as a way to think about advancing wealth creation, not just job creation, but wealth creation in a community. And so I think that, again, community can be diverse and it can be equitable, it can give you to be diverse and inequity. We face some challenges in Greenville as it relates to those issues. I hope that answers your question.
It does. And finally, just a couple, couple of comments. In the, in the, in your presentation, you talk about effects of gentrification and affordability. And you also talk about affordability in terms of attracting people, business people and stuff and the like. And I don't know if this is beyond the scope of what you guys do, but, but my understanding or my belief for those two things is that what's necessary to combat gentrification is a totally different type of affordability that's necessary to attract the type of individuals that we want to move to the area to, to, to come work here. So if it's not beyond you guys' scope, if y'all could look at that to see like, you know, what type of, particularly with regard, with regard to AMI and stuff like that. I mean, certainly if we're asking some, someone who comes here, say, who's out of college and is making in the forties or something like that, an eighty percent AMI might do them just fine. But in order to combat gentrification, we're going to need to go probably sixty, fifty, forty, or even thirty AMI. So if y'all could look at what our affordable housing scope is and try to figure out how we balance those two, that would be great. The other comment is about, you mentioned about the lack of individuals or the disparity of black individuals with, with bachelor degrees. One of the things I'd also look at in trying to combat that is trying to figure out ways to, to motivate children who grew up here and went off to college to come back here. Because I can assure you that a large reason why we don't have, why, why there are a number of, why there's disparity is because we have a, a huge number of kids who go off to college and then don't see opportunity here and they end up moving to either Charlotte or Atlanta or somewhere else and that's where we lose them. Thanks though.
Stephen, I have a comment.
Can I just make a final comment to, 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 to close that up with the previous comment? I, I tend to agree with you, right? I think one of the things that, you know, again, an economic development strategy has to be multi-pronged. And it has to do business attraction, it has to talent attraction. And today's economic development strategy has to try to address some of the issues of equity. I look forward to your comments, some of the, some of the things that we're recommending in the, in the strategy work as it relates to doing that. One of the things I think as it relates to, 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 to equity is that I think a lot of times we just think about equity, the, the challenges of solving equity through just job creation, skill attainment. One of the things I want to, would push us all to, to think through as well as we're thinking about these issues is to think through, how do we create wealth in the community as well? And so you'll see in the work, we'll get to some of the strategy ideas that we are, we are suggesting to the city and to you all to think about wealth creation as it relates to entrepreneurship for people of color. I think it is something that can actually help move the needle. I have spent a long time in this space. Prior to being a consultant at IC, at, at, at residence, I was at a think tank, Mike Porter's think tank, looking at distressed city work and knowing that if you want to create opportunity in communities, it starts with wealth creation and it starts doing it in the neighborhood in a place-based way, place-based, place-based means. And so you can see some of that, I think, reflected as we go forward in a bit. So I, I, I hopefully, I'll look forward to your comments when we get to strategy work here in a second.
Hey, can I, kind of on that topic. Hey Stephen, this is Dorothy Dow and you and I met and talked a little bit about this. And I, I think I see it in your goal number four, but I want to make sure that what I think we, we came to in our discussion is, is what we came to. You know, to Councilmember DeWorke's point, we came down this journey from GVL twenty forty where three critical pillars, access to affordable housing, mobility and open space in the environment bubbled to the surfaces, the priorities, the what we value here in Greenville. So we spent a lot of time, two, two years, a long time, with a lot of people stating that those were what we believe in, what we most value. And it came to the question of, that's great, but now how do we pay for it? It was the how do we pay for it that kind of drove, we need an economic development strategy. Addressing our D E I concerns and our, our poor record on economic mobility in terms of bringing people up, bringing people up out of poverty, people who were born into poverty, out of poverty over a lifetime. That we, we do have a dismal record on that. And I think we are inwardly, uh, recognizing that and recognize we need to do something about it. Isn't it also true that the fact that, or is it also true that the fact that we're coming up short in that area and have a history of coming up short in that area? That over time, if not already, will compromise our ability to attract not only talent, um, to stay in Greenville, like to attract back the talent that's left, but also to attract new investment, maybe in venture capital, maybe in, you know, whatever business one, that, that we are watched. That that matters to people who are considering coming here. And, and that's why it's worthy of an entire slide, so to speak. Is that, that we're in a new nor, it's not a new normal, but it's, it, it really matters and it's important.
Council, uh, woman, that was a leading question.
That's what I thought we agreed on. Is that, was I correct on that?
You're, you're exactly right, right? I mean, I think, um, it is, it, it, you know, it's not enough to build an innovation based economy now. You have to, you have to have a commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion as part of your economic portfolio without a doubt, right? Um, and I think that when we, when you look at site selection and look at, um, any, you know, surveys among talented, uh, you know, the quote unquote creative class or any of those types of people that the city of Greenville wants to ta, uh, to, to, to attract and retain back home. The commitment to, uh, D E I, um, is super important. Um, and is something that, um, companies are looking at, site selectors are looking at. Um, and you know, and frankly, it, it, you know, it, it's also what I think that, um, that, that workforce that you all really hope to, hope to attract back is looking for that. The other piece that I would put on there, um, to that, not just a D E I, and, and, and I think you represent this in your, in your comprehensive plan actually really well. Is that not only are, um, talented, uh, folks looking for, um, a commitment to D E I, but they're also looking for a commitment to the challenges of, um, to climate and the changes that are related to, uh, related to that. And so you, you know, promoting the efforts that you are doing as part of your comprehensive plans as it relates to those challenges. I think are also something that's really important about, um, telling the story of Greenville. And so, you know, if I'm thinking about Greenville going forward and I'm hired as your chief economic development or marketing and, uh, person, you know, it is about telling a story. And the story for Greenville is that we have been a place that is invested in equality of place, built one of the best places in this, uh, in the south to live. But now we're committed to thinking through building on that, an innovation, cutting edge economy that creates opportunity for everyone is addressing some of the challenges. That's the message and I think you'll see that reflected, um, in the work that, uh, that we're going to present here in the strategic work, um, going forward.
Thanks.
Um, if it was, if it's okay for time sakes, what I may do is just go ahead and jump in and talk about some of the strategy ideas as well. So let me do that.
We watch the time, John. We got a lot on the agenda too.
I'll do this quickly. So the part of the strategy we're going to talk about today is vision, goals and strategies. We're not going to talk about action steps. We're not going to talk about resources and partners, um, but really just kind of the basis of what would be the, the, the foundation for this strategy work. Uh, the one thing I want to suggest to you is that you guys are not the first to see this. We've actually, uh, Merrill put together a really terrific, uh, uh, steering committee of business leaders, community leaders, um, throughout, uh, throughout the city of Greenville. They've actually seen this plan and they've commented on this plan. We've included their feedback. And so what you're actually seeing is sort of two point O of this strategy. And we'll look for your feedback as it relates to how, how we can even make this better going forward. So a vision statement, um, I, you know, I think that all economic development strategy should have a vision statement. Um, it, it tells, um, it is your story. It provides the framework for who you are and what you are. Um, and one of the things that we decided to do as it related to your vision statement is that there's a lot of amazing work that's already happened, um, as it relates to your talent attraction strategy. So we kind of built upon that, the idea that Greenville is one of the best launching paths in the world for dreamers, doers and makers. We create opportunity here. So the one piece of this that seems to be missing as it related to that, that, that talent attraction campaign, that investment campaign, was the idea about creating opportunity and building opportunities. So we added that, I think that will reflect as it gets to some of the diversity, equity, inclusion work going forward. So Greenville is one of the best launching paths in the world for dreamers, doers and makers. We create opportunity here. Um, so we built a strategy, um, around seven key goals. I'm going to talk about the goals in broad states and then provide some of the priorities for them. We also opted to write this in first person. We want the city of Greenville to own this. We want the, its economic development partners, its community partners, its business, um, community to own this economic development strategy. This is not just an economic development strategy for the city and Merrill staff and the city staff. But it's a strategy that reflects economic development properties for the entire city of Greenville. So we wrote it in first person. So our first goal, front and center is around upstate innovation. We will bring together Greenville's entrepreneurs and innovators and investors to create a best in class entrepreneurial ecosystem. Many of you mentioned that as a, as a number one priority as we talked about what you wanted to see in the work. And so we lead with that in terms of being a really key piece of this, thinking about the innovation based economy. The second part of the strategy was thinking through, how do we attract, uh, new investment? So we will attract new investment to future proof Greenville's economy and future prosperity. We just had a long detailed conversation about those industries and how you think about that. That would relate here in terms of the investment piece, so thinking about new investment. Goal three is about a launching pad for talent. We will build and support a talent base of doers, thinkers and mayors, makers, not just about talent attraction, um, but also thinking about talent retention as well as talent upscaling. This need again, how do you connect a resident who maybe don't have the skill set and the training to industry sectors that are growing in Greenville and make the connection between the two? Goal four is our equity, uh, our, our D E I goal. We'll build a place for everyone. We'll ensure all Greenville residents and, uh, enterprises can thrive, making diversity, equity, inclusion a city priority as it relates to economic development. Goal five is about maintaining your liv- uh, livability. This connects the, this goal connects your, uh, G L V twenty forty plan to the economic development strategy, maintaining livability. We'll address Greenville's challenges of growth and success, housing affordability, transportation and mobility. Goal six is about doing all the great things that you all already do. And then it's thinking about place making. We'll preserve and celebrate Greenville as a permanent lifestyle destination. And then finally, um, goal seven, which is super important to the implementation of this is, um, is thinking about how do we do this? How do we operate as a city? How do we operate with our partners? What's the organizational structure that's needed and the resourcing that's needed to really make this happen? So we'll adopt an economic development strategy, uh, economic development organizational strategy that effectively supports the implementation of the strategy. So that's a preview. I'm going to go through each goal, uh, one by one. Goal one, again, reminding you is about innovation. We'll bring together Greenville's entrepreneurs, innovators, investors to, uh, to build a best in class entrepreneurial ecosystem. So how do we do that? Those five ideas about doing that. First is partnering with Next and all the other entrepreneurship organizations that you have in town to think about how to grow Greenville startup and small businesses. Strategy one point two is executing an innovation district strategy. You talked a lot about that as a city. So actually now putting as part of the economic development strategy and saying, we're actually going to push through and make this happen. Uh, one point three is doing, uh, exactly what we talked about with life sciences earlier, leading in life science and saying, look, we've got the, we have the foundation to really, um, build upon the suppliers, this, the R and D, the research institutions that are tied to this. So we really want to own this and make it part of our, our, our brand ethos and our, our economic development story. Goal one point four is doing better relationships with your universities. You're going to hear me say this over and over as it relates to almost all of these goals. Supporting the technology transfer and the commercialization at Clemson, Furman, I T I C and other institutions. And then finally, um, let's, you know, yes, economic development is about strategic work and doing, you know, if, uh, doing initiatives. But it's also just about really good storytelling, celebrating Greenville's entrepreneur success stories and telling that story. You know, what types of companies have been born and raised, um, and launched out of Greenville? Communicating that story over and over is going to be really important to creating that, that ecosystem environment to really support innovation. Goal two, um, investment for the future, thinking about new investments to future prove our economy and build prosperity. Um, you know, two point one is executing a business cluster visitation strategy. You know, actually getting your clusters and your major employers by industry to come together and actually have, um, legitimate conversations about supply chain needs, uh, talent challenges, issues that they're facing in the workforce. Um, in fact, as part of this strategy, it was one of the first times that many of your major employers in same industry sectors actually got together to have these conversations facilitated by the comp, uh, by the city. And so the city really stepping up and saying, look, we're going to, we're going to facilitate these conversations and we are really going to be an active partner and try to, um, try to move cluster development going forward. So two point two is about taking all the data that we've done for you, as we talked about earlier, and using that to develop a headquarters and lead generation strategy that's informed by data, informed by the F B I work. There's reams and reams of data that's here and this, that's, that's in this, in this strategy. It's just amount now, you know, having your staff take that data, understand how the, what those clusters are, looking for growth, talking to your major employers and connecting supply chain opportunities with outward export initiatives. So really going all in on, on a business attraction effort. You guys have built the environment to do it. You now just need to activate on it. You know, two point three, I think one of the things that's very interesting to me is that Greenville has a very active site selector community. There are a lot of site selectors that actually live in Greenville. And so building upon, um, that and really, uh, creating, uh, creating opportunity to think about how you build those relationships with that group. That site selection group is another really important, uh, audience as it relates to economic development. They're the folks that are making the connections between companies and cities. And so we want to make sure that we're on the radar of all of those groups. Telling our story, act, marketing our cluster strengths, being very specific about messaging. The way we message opportunity and life sciences in Greenville may be quite different by the way we, uh, message the opportunity around marketing and advertising and creative services in Greenville. So we need to be specific about that and build out the right types of efforts to do that. Goal two point five, um, we had an opportunity to meet with several of the developers when we were in town. Um, and one of the things that they really, uh, that was appreciated by the development community in, 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 in Greenville was there's a lot of opportunity with city council and our, and the, and Mr. Mayor and others, um, that are helping to make those connections. But there was this question really about can we systemi- systematically do it in a way that has a, a real best in class sort of real estate practice within our redevelopment efforts? Understanding how to make those connections between those public and private partnerships. And so really going all in on building out this process where it's systematic. And it's going to be, it's going to, it's going to, you know, hopefully outlive many of you that are on council and even some of your economic development staff, uh, going forward. So thinking through what that looks like to build out that systematic process. And then finally, um, doing all the things around, um, that, that is important to the, the efforts that are, um, that G S P and Visit Greenville has made around that connectivity, the connections of your airport and supporting the efforts of how we think about that and also leverage the, the downtown airport, uh, the Greenville downtown airport as well. So goal three is about thinking about talent, building upon a strategy that stewards thinkers and makers. Um, so three point one, um, for a city your size, for its number of, uh, colleges and universities around you, you gotta have, you should have some type of campus uh, initiative, some campus Greenville type of initiative when you connect in. Uh, one of the things that we know that if you want college students to stick around, you have to get them engaged, not at the last year through an internship program, but starting when they're college freshmen and throughout that process. And so that means giving them opportunity to understand how great it is to live and work in Greenville. That means connecting them to employers as well as helping to think through the idea of social opportunity and, and really social capitalism, which is through volunteerism and connections through, um, organizations and campus, building out that, you know, if, if economic development is about attracting businesses and, uh, and, and old schools, attracting businesses and, and, and maintaining those businesses, uh, you know, today's economic development is about doing that on the people side as well. And so thinking through, how do you, how do you make access to those university students that are already there? During your campaign around young professionals, which are already doing great work, connecting that through, um, through a remote worker ecosystem. So it's not just enough to think about, you know, saying we're a great place to remote work. That means that we have to think about, well, do we have the capabilities to support remote work? Meaning, do we have the third spaces? Are we actually doing the social cohesion, uh, of connecting through, uh, uh, the types where people can connect together and build networks? Again, that intentionality around social capitalism is super, super important. Thinking about C T E programs and training programs and how to do that with local mentoring as well. Goal four is really around as our D E I, um, priority. So first and foremost is building upon a lot of the efforts that's already happening, uh, around D E I efforts, building out that robust services. Um, you know, four point two, I think is maybe it's time, um, uh, that the city actually do a city Y D E I study to really better understand these challenges, to dive deeper into some of the questions that you all have raised as an opportunity to provide a foundation for some of the strategic work. Goal four point three is thinking about how you leverage your anchor based institutions. So think about local purchasing and supplier diversity and how to connect to that. Goal four point four is thinking about the, uh, create a career training pathway to some of the trade and sector work and being an intentionality as it relates to residents of color and how we do that. Goal five, as I said before, is about taking all the things that you've done, for instance, in your downtown development, uh, and learn from downtown and take it again, apply it in some of your underserved neighborhoods and corridors. Wealth creation, if you're really wanting to create wealth creation in underserved neighborhoods, it happens at the entrepreneurship level and a place based approach. Study after study has shown that as a way to, to sow success there. Four point six is celebrating the cultural diversity of Greenville, telling that story. And then four point seven is doing a lot of what you're already doing, which is thinking about the community gathering places and investing in those places as to tell that story. Goal five is maintaining livability. This ties back to our, our G L V twenty forty plan. You know, making sure we have the infrastructure invested around transportation and mobility and then also activating on all of the strategic work as it relates to housing affordability. You can't just talk about the G L V twenty plan is, 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 is a comprehensive plan. It now has to be part of the messaging as it relates to the economic development opportunities that you're creating. So the two have to be married together. Goal six is about place making, celebrating and telling the story for Greenville, what it is, promoting the brand and image, thinking about partnerships that can help attain thing quality of place, doing all the things that you're doing in your downtown quarters, continuing to, to, to tell that story, extending some of the place making efforts again to your neighborhoods. And finally, um, taking on some of the efforts that are in the G L V twenty forty plan and thinking about your green space and your tree cover and trail systems as it relates to, to, to that as a destination. And then finally, goal seven, and I apologize for running through these quickly, but I've been told that I'm almost out of time, is thinking about the organizational structure. We really have to think through what that looks like. And I know there's efforts underway to, to think about that, um, as it relates to the implementation. So evaluate the structure and then think about how that, that relates to our economic development efforts and a lot of the efforts that are outlined in the strategic, strategy going forward. So next steps in this, in the strategy is, is to take your feedback and comments. Um, Merrill is going to give an opportu- hopefully have an opportunity to, to, to hear from you all, get feedback from there. We'll take those, then we'll build this into a detailed implementation plan where you can start to see how this looks like over the course of five years and who's responsible for what and what the resourcing looks like. With that, I'll stop. I can answer any questions if there's time available.
Okay. What is our available time, John? Ten minutes, okay. I, I thought one of the, uh, takeaways for me was the organizational structure, uh, remark at the very end, uh, we, we haven't spent a lot of time talking about that, but I don't see any way you can look at all of this and understand that each, each little piece of that is a lot of work and a lot of different activities, some of which we're doing now, but some we're not. And, uh, the organizational structure has to reflect that in terms of the focus on these, on getting the job done. And that means personnel and lines of jurisdiction and what they're supposed to address and deal making and all the good things that come into play. But I appreciate your emphasis on that because I don't think we're quite set up to do that as of now.
Yeah, look, I think that, you know, what I just outlined for you is a huge economic development plan, right? I mean, it's, it's, if you take out the that one, it's six goals. I think we've got thirty five priorities over a course of five years. That means that, um, it's going to require, uh, new resourcing, new strategic work to think about how that happens amongst the partners. And I know, again, there's, there's efforts to, to do that and uncover that in, in tandem with the work that we're doing. But, you know, there's a lot of opportunity and a lot of access. It's just that, uh, generally speaking, as we look at who you are as a city, you know, I would submit that for town your size, you're under, you're under, you're under resourced and under leveraged as it relates to your economic development efforts. And so to be able to do that, we want to make, to be able to pull this plan off, have the same success that you want to have like you're having with your jail twenty forty plan, we want to be able to do that on the staffing side for the economic development efforts as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Um, just a comment, I'm glad you emphasized the fact that the G V L twenty forty and this plan would be married because, uh, they're not exclusive one, of one another. In fact, they feed off each other. And I think for us to be successful in all those areas, um, e- each plan has to be, has to be seen through policy appropriations. I, I get excited about, I'm really excited about this plan. I, I often say, you know, Austin started somewhere, Nashville started somewhere, even Boston started somewhere. At one point, they all said, we have to put together a plan, focus on areas such as innovation, entrepreneurship, et cetera. And, um, I, I just, I think this is, we've got an already great foundation in Greenville with quality life, business community. Um, got really talented people in this community. And so now, uh, I'm excited because we get to. people in this community, and so now I'm excited because we get to get going on this, so appreciate the work.
Thank you.
So either for residents or city manager or Merrill, as we evolve through this scope of work, remind me, are recommended key performance indicators a final step of this?
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. So there will be, thank you for that, there's going to be action items and resourcing plans to this, but also we will come back with you and suggest some KPIs, both outcome metrics as well as process metrics as well.
Thank you.
Yep, of course.
Okay. Lee? Thanks, Stephen.
Thanks for having me, y'all. Have a great afternoon.
Good to see you.
Cheers. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Thanks, Stephen.
Sure.
Mr. Ray, you have two items, I believe, for executive session this afternoon, both under subsection A2, Camilla, if I'm right about that. One is for contract negotiations for potential amendment to the development agreement regarding the Grand Bohemian, and then the second one that was added is just on the agenda that was added.
It's a contractual matter related to the unit department.
Unit department maintenance facility. Thank you.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, say aye.